Ms. Alberts. Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hawley.
Here.
Mr. Genelli. Mr. Johnston. Mr. Garat.
Here.
Mr. Metrino. Ms. Valenero.
Here.
Mr. Petropasa.
Present.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Six.
Alright. Okay, my favorite part of the night, recognition. So for the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Association Student Awards. Longview Middle School. Stoms.
Hi. I've not seen my kids. But I'll still come up.
Well, still, more mention anyway.
Um, Rafael Buhna, he is an amazing student. Um, one thing I like about Rafael is the fact that he is an incredible athlete as well as a star student. He is in the top ten. And actually received this award. He's a great school model and we just love having him in our building. And it's going to be great things on the show there. And then Avery Marquez, she is also has an amazing heart. One of the things we love about her, she does a unified sports program. She works with our special youth camps and she is just an incredible company. And once again, we're going to give great things about her. Both these individuals have been honor roll since sixth grade. So we're very proud of them.
Rogers Park. Rogers Park Middle School.
Hi. Um, our two students, Riorana and Christopher Andreco, are not here this evening because we are hosting the seventh and eighth grade PBL History Night. And both students had to choose and they thought that their academics were important and said that they really apologized for not being here, but they wanted to be with their projects as parents and the community were coming for them. Uh, both of the students are honor roll students. They're very committed to their academics and to the community. And they were very excited and their families were thrilled to have, to see the children being recognized. And again, they feel apologized for not being here.
So Westside Middle School. Al Gilobanca. And Angela Tellerico and Grace Seaver. Side over.
So it's a pleasure to introduce Drew Tellerico and Grace, both members of the AHS class. Westside Middle School Academy. Grace will be part of our inaugural moving on class for the Global Studies Academy. And Drew, a member of the STEM program. Both fantastic students, honor roll students. Grace is a member of the National Junior Honor Society, admitted member in service. Drew also a very active soccer player and we are very proud to have him work with us.
You guys can just come out so we can just take your hand and congratulate you. And also if the parents could stand up, we want to give you a round of applause also. Spotlight, spotlight from you guys. Thank you, guys. And Danbury High School. Stephanie Lopez and Chris Rodriguez.
This is Stephanie Lopez, a 12th grader at the AHS with a 3.6 GPA. She's an exceptional young lady. Her resilience, positivity are especially outstanding given some of the challenges she's had in her life. As an immigrant, Stephanie's strengths and character has not only helped her adapt to a new home, culture, and language, but also, but it also serves as an education inspiration to others. Stephanie is a member of the Connecticut Students for a Dream Act, one we just came from heart for today. She's just rushed out today, so we called her on that one. And very much a strong advocate for this group. We have weekly conversations with her and her Nelson who committed to help us do that. Uh, she was an active member of the Fight Child Hunger Club, but took over a leadership role in the Connecticut's For a Dream and is currently enrolled in the CNA nursing program as well. And she will go far in her educational profession, Mary Stephanie Lopez.
Can you just, you could take a minute to kind of walk around so we can congratulate you?
What do you want to say about Chris before she goes?
Sure.
Uh, Chris Rodriguez, 12th grader, 3.3 GPA. He, I believe, is in volleyball and volleyball right now. Uh, they're making a save run, so they didn't get the practice tonight. He's inherently curious and wants to know more than the basic material in the textbook and the classroom at all times. As a result, he tends to look into issues from various angles and deeply understands the concepts presented to him. His peers seek him out for help and support on a daily, daily basis. He is a natural athlete. He's participated in several years of our soccer team. The mission decided to try wrestling and volleyball. He works hard academically to maintain his good grades and manages to successfully divide his time with work outside as well as his score. He's extremely mature and everyone thinks very highly of his work ethic and his impact. Chris Rodriguez.
To the alternative center, Deanna Hernandez. Okay. Congratulations, Deanna. Okay. So. Kathy, come on up. Kathy, come on up, introduce.
Um, I'm here to talk tonight about Ellen Calley. Um, Ellen has been a school nurse at Great Plains for 20 years. And she consistently demonstrates exceptional school nurse practice. Ellen practices school health with skill and with knowledge. She's culturally confident. She is sensitive and professional in every way. And every year, the Association of School Nurses in Connecticut recognizes nurses for their excellence in school nurse practice. So as part of the nomination process, I contacted Ms. Smith, principal, and asked her if she would provide me with a letter of support for Ellen's nomination, as well as one or two other letters of support. And they came back in a very good way. And I just want to share a few of the highlights of what the staff and parents and other services personnel have said about Ellen. Our school nurse Ellen Calley is otherwise known as superhero. Ellen's extraordinary skill to comfort a sick child and to alleviate worrying parents can be done at any time. She demonstrates compassion and grace. Ellen speaks with kindness and gives a little piece of herself to everyone she needs. More so longer her knowledge and experience is her superpower. Ellen is a role model for our entire community. Her support and advocacy for the importance of physical and emotional health and the connection they have for academic, social, and behavioral success is evident wherever she goes. She plays a tremendous role in creating a culture of positivity here at Great Plains Elementary School. She's a member of our youth crime committee, social committee, and assists in attending school events because she appreciates the importance of her part in our school family. She friends with her colleagues and has become another on the group 5A. She participates in weekly exercise classes at her school. Has independently decorated the teacher's lounge and offered her own time to be auctioned off to the students paying kindness points for dance belts. And Ms. Woodparrett, for eight years, Ellen Calley has been instrumental in part of my kids' and my family's well-being. My daughter always said Nurse Calley was her grown-up best friend. She makes all of the kids feel special. She is loving, calm, caring, helpful, smart, funny, friendly, and always professional at the same time. Both of my kids have food allergies and are antilactic to several foods. Nurse Calley helped teach them how to keep themselves safe and we have never been more grateful for someone like her to have influenced our lives. A school nurse's job has many hats these days, and Nurse Ellen Calley wears the ball to perfection. I get to meet a nurse who's compassionate and professional as Ellen is, yet manages to keep her head above the water. Her fans adore her and her office is a place of comfort and love. She makes it a priority to build a beautiful rapport with all of her students. In a hectic situation, Ellen is always calm and professional. Mrs. Calley's dedication to provide a special care to our students, staff, and parents has been a treat to watch, especially owing to her immense ability to handle emergencies with tact, sensitivity, and professionalism. And for a teacher, Ellen has educated me and helped me to understand the specific needs of students with special conditions and diseases that I work with while respecting their privacy. This knowledge helps me to do my job better and more effectively. She cares deeply for the health and well-being of each of the students at Great Plains Elementary. Ellen has also been very highly regarded by her nurses and colleagues in the district. Uh, she's served as a mentor for new nurses who come in. She's my go-to person. I need someone to shadow to see exactly how it should be done. She has served for many years as president of the Nurses Union and has given countless hours of her own time to help support her nurses. So many of the nurses have told me that they're better school nurses today because of all the generous sharing and help is done through talking about experience. So I'm very proud to say that Ellen was awarded the Peer Leadership Award in School Nursing by the Association of School Nurses in Connecticut. Um, we celebrated her award at the annual state dinner. And I want to thank you Ellen for everything you do every day. You are an amazing school nurse and you have very much to be proud of. Congratulations.
I know firsthand, since my kids both went through Great Plains School, that no one in that building is more loved or respected than Nurse Calley. So I just want to say congratulations. And if her colleagues are here, if you guys like to stand up also, we'd like to say thank you and give you guys a round of applause also. Thank you. Okay. Retirees. What a lovely day for you guys. You know, just when I was going through a certificate of appreciation sign and I was looking at the years and saw some numbers and I have to tell you, to be in a public school system as long as some of these years, let alone in Danbury School System, is nothing short of a miracle. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you to everyone. You know, and just, I, it's, I'm honored to give you guys these certificates and thank you guys in person in public. Um, because we do know the hard work that you guys do and we might not hear a lot from, from us, but we do appreciate it. So thank you. Okay. First up. Elizabeth Anderson. Thirty-one year, oh, again, thirty-one years. I'm just going to stick a standing. Next up, Deborah Christensen. Diana Galan, forty-one years. Deborah Hocking, twenty-six years. Mary Ann Howley, eighteen years. Lynn Beaker, twenty-nine years. Ollie Mudd, sixteen years. Kalina Metalsky. Nancy Pond, thirty-one years. Linda Starr, forty-one years. Aaron Spikes, eighteen years. Okay, Valerie Trace, forty-two years. Joan Methusen, twenty-five years. Uh, this was the last one on the pile, but it might, this might be a record. Sandra Turner, forty-five years. Was there anyone here that we, we missed that might have been?
Look at her, she's going right now. She's taking off.
You're on the list, it's just.
Alright, turn. Can we go now?
Thirty-two years. I, I just wanted to read some of the people who could not attend. Um, Susan Barnum, Joyce Burns. They don't have the years on here, but I'm sure it's, it's long. Uh, Bria Estebas, Mary Ann Cali notice, Kelly Brooks, Roseanne. Brooks, yeah. Wrong on the paper. Brooks Kelly, Ozan Koweski. Karen Margulis. Chester Osicki, if I mess up the name, please don't tell me. Susan Vetch. Linda Soder. Donald Tonic. Georgina Traver. And Laura Wood was here. We got you. Thank you very much. Alright. There is public participation, there is no one? Feel free. We're not going to make you stay one second longer. That is officially. Okay, so no, no one signed in for public participation? Greg Keedall? The consent calendar. Mr. Walker?
The Board of Education approved the items on a consent calendar exhibit seventeen dash sixty-eight through seventeen seventy-one as recommended.
Second, I have a small arrow. Or Ms. Cooper, whoever wants to say it, whoever. Okay. Is there any discussion? No? All favor? Any suggestions? No? Great. Spotlight your school tonight? Alright. Oh, yes. So you want to, okay, let's do the student representative first so you could, uh, yeah, yeah. Okay. We're saving you to the end. Of course.
Hi. So I have a few statistics on what our students are doing post-graduation. Twenty-seven point five of our students are attending a two-year college. Fifty-four percent to a four-year college. Two point eight percent to the military. And two point six are taking a gap year, which means they'll be attending their college in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, this Friday, six hundred and seventy of our students will be attending senior prom at the Amber Room, including me. And I don't know how that's going to go, because that's a lot of people. Last Thursday, seniors and staff were asked to sign the last I-beam, which will be put into and part of the new building. And here are some of the notable colleges our students are attending. Cornell, Dartmouth, Yale, West Point, Rochester Institute of Technology, New York University, Virginia Tech, Purdue, George Washington University, Rinseleer, and User.
Think you can fly up here with the construction and see if it's okay or not? Tell truth.
In just one building, it's kind of rough, but the rest is fine. It's D, it's D one, yeah? Yeah, it's a terrific.
Thank you. Congrats. Okay. Spotlight your school, King Street. Come on up.
These are good.
Hey, John, we were setting these up like a head of talk.
I was worried for my, uh, that to be, but, uh, it's a nice smoker. Um, so, uh, thank you for, for having us here to highlight our school, our campus. Uh, my name is Tia Hissaf and this is Gwen Gallagher. Um, in order to prepare for, um, to In order to prepare for tonight's ten-to-fifteen-minute presentation, we invited staff to volunteer, meet with us after school, and help develop. What do we wanna highlight and share with you? And so, we decided we're gonna make this into two parts. One, the district part, because we've probably heard those pieces before, because many have gone before us, and we are a district, and we have similar same initiatives. And there are then some things that make us unique. But while we're talking, and we're talking about these big initiatives, we started highlighting little successes along the way, and I couldn't help but share them with you. For example, one student, it was a student who took all year with support to find his confidence and trust to actually be able to speak in front of their class. And that's a success. Some students have found a passion to be writing. Before, the students were writing in pencil aid, they couldn't quite get the words down on paper. A symbol change that a teacher noticed out of pen, students now writing. Using the laptop. Wasn't writing, and now have found the love of writing using another tool. A success. We had a student who refused to leave the classroom, couldn't figure out why. Well, and then the teachers, with some investigation, some heart, figured out that the students' shoes were very uncomfortable. The teachers purchased some shoes on the side. Another success. Many others recognized and discovered that there was language all around the environment as they are learning to read. Another success. So, I know we're gonna be highlighting some big initiatives, whether it's a district one or the school-based one. I want you to know, we've had many, many little successes that are big to us, but little successes that are at the heart of what we do, and that I am, we are proud of our staff to make all those little things happen, and that's why we're here. So, success is a journey and not a destination. Our school is unique, because we have two buildings, the primary and the intermediate, and we have in total about seven hundred and eighty students. About one-third are ESL students. So, the first section of our presentation, we said we'd talk about new district initiatives. This year, we started out with the instructional pie. That was the intention of really reading out the garden, making sure that we were maximizing our time and spending the time where our curriculum was. In doing this, we had the teachers place in a location in their classroom, their schedule posted each day, and we had some nice and unintended consequences. One was that the students in even the younger grades began telling time, because they knew as reading came along, it was, you know, ten o'clock. So, not only did the students learn the time, they also started to understand the duration of time, which is a big thing for kids. And the teachers also commented that having those times posted really gave them the ability to keep pace, because sometimes when you go into something that you love, you can really speak and go on and on about it. So, keeping pace allowed our teachers to be able to keep their pace on their curriculum, and so when they're meeting in their grade level teams, they were able to collaborate, because they were all at the same place. Another initiative was the reading and writing workshop. Our teachers have been dying for this. They've been waiting for this initiative. And their enthusiasm bumped off the students' enthusiasm. If you're familiar with the readers and writers workshop, in the younger grades, the kids get to be detectives, and they get to search for clues. They get to have playdates with books. For example, they can do seesaw reading, or guess the colored word. And my favorite, you can be the teacher, where one student will read to the other. But they get to play these games. They can also have some superpowers. And what's happened is we really increased the stamina of our students' reading and also writing. Moving down, we've had some new vocabulary programs, and also we've spent some time with the four or five teachers, teaching them about the phonetics. Because this was a piece where we felt that there was a gap, that kids might have missed those key pieces, and so we wanted to make sure that the teachers in those grades were able to kind of fulfill that gap. Math investigations was also very appreciated by the teachers. I'm not sure if, I'm sure you've heard that before. They liked having the materials, and the program has interactive games, and we were able to use our Promethean boards given to us by our PTO. And the conversations in math moved from one response to, "How many ways can you express, let's say, perimeter?", or "How many ways can you express ten?". So, we were looking at math using Comic Board, of course, but also having the materials right on hand. So, this is what it looked like on our campus. And this is the King Street intermediate chorus. I love that song. Okay. So, I can't say enough about our dedicated families at King Street. They've raised money for us to buy materials, technology, and all the classrooms, iPads, the Promethean boards for every single classroom. But it's not just about money. They also volunteer in the classrooms, whatever the teachers need. Sometimes science, sometimes mystery readers. Our parents also come to the campus. They don't even want acknowledgement, but they're beautifying the campus. I'll walk in, and there's flowers on the side. And you know what, just walking through a building that has, that looks nice, it feels good, and I know the kids feel the same way. It's that pride in your school, and the kids take that pride as well. We offered an after-school program to some students who needed extra help, and we had families without cars, and they were making arrangements to get their child picked up. That's like dedicated, that's the kind of supportive parents that we have at King Street, and it makes me so proud. We also have committed staff members, and I have to look over here, for some of our committed staff, number three of them are retiring. Maybe they'll come back and volunteer, hopefully. And then also, Amy Eskamia is not retiring, but she's several more years after me. And so, thank you for staying. But it's nice to go to work and have people have the pride and respect that you do when you're working. We have people who go above and beyond every single day, and do all those things I talked about before. You know, they find out why that child didn't wanna leave the classroom. They find out, you know, why that was uncomfortable to write in that way. They ask the questions because they care. You can't really quantify that, but it happens, and I see it. Our media center had a new carpet placed in it last year. Thank you, it looks beautiful. But the shelves need to be moved, the books need to be moved. And while our custodians did a great job moving most, a lot of it fell on our media specialist, because he wanted to, he was there all summer, just putting his touch on, making sure our book was in the right spot. And when we came back, all the books were in the right spot for the kids. Our grade level teams, they meet together, they plan their curriculum. Drive by any night at King Street, and you're gonna see a ton of cars still in the parking lot, especially Thursdays. The teachers plan late late at night, and they have to, because the work that needs to be done, first of all, is best done in a group, and second, it can't be done in a silo. That's what we've discovered, the work is better in teams. So, our teams help each other, they help each other with the team projects, or anything that needs to get done. Our special areas teach out, are also very helpful. They actually do some instruction, even though they may be an art teacher or a painting teacher, they have their hands in working with students in sight words and in reading. We've got resource teachers who make sensory items out of tennis balls or scraps of material to make the environment better for the kids. We've had teachers who plan trips, including our exciting New York trip that's coming up. They're planning these trips to give experienced kids who may not have otherwise been able to access that opportunity. The next piece I wanted to highlight was the roots of our learning tree. We find the roots in our learning tree. The staff came up with a pledge, and that included our stripes, safety, teamwork, respect, integrity, pride, and empathy. And this year, we also infused key elements of positive discipline. Positive discipline helps with kids with self-regulation, and gives kids language to help solve problems. Kind of like, "It really bugs me when I wish that you would", you may have heard like "I" statements, those types of things. I'm giving kids a place to go when they need to cool down, and giving them some knowledge of, you know, we're not all happy all the time, and what can I do when I'm not in that right spot to learn. We had a red carpet initiative. A big piece of feedback that Gwen and I received was, we wanted to make sure Mill Ridge families felt welcome when they came into intermediate. That's been something that we've been really, really working hard on. And Amy Eskamia, what she was working on her graduate work, took this on as one of her projects. And we're connecting the two schools earlier in the third grade year, so by the time they're in fourth grade, hopefully we're in a better spot where they meet some new friends. She's done that in the way of pen pals, and also bringing them together to meet their pen pal. And we're having a fourth-grade orientation, which no other building would do, but we need to do that to introduce the third-grade, not only the third-grade students, but also their families. We want them to feel welcome, and we realize that that takes a lot of work, and so we've been really emphasizing that. And finally, on this slide, we've been piloting, we piloted up the ladder TC units. We had nine staff across the campus that were committed to learning new units. And we shared samples of that student work with Teachers College, and it really bumped up the caliber of work that we noticed. And as we submitted it to TC, some of our King Street work is in published units. So, in the high-end new units, we've recognized Danbury Public Schools, that there are work and our value in that. And again, that also increased our excitement, because we were published, and that's incredible. So, some additional highlights for the campus is with our accountability funding. We did some different approaches, Tina touched on one of them. The first one at King Street Primary, we had a new approach to working with our SRBI students, the students that are struggling. Thanks to the supportive families, we were able to extend their day, and to continue to improve their literacy skills in an after-school program. Our new approach at KSI was to use our reading interventionist to cycle for groups of students who needed just that little extra push to increase their reading skills. So, those are two new initiatives we tried out this year, and some good success. We have many different opportunities for our students on campus. Some of the things include a geography bee. We had two moms come in and work with forty of our students on working on honing in on their geography skills, much better than I ever was, I'm telling you. They competed in the second annual KSI Geography Bee, and we always have our one top student that goes on and takes the state qualifying exam, so that's exciting. We had the invention convention come to our campus again for the second year. We had six of our students compete at the local convention. One student, a kindergarten student, Nico, which you, I think, recognized in the last meeting or a few meetings ago, did go on to the regional and state event, and very exciting, he's going on nationally. He's in the top three of kindergarten through second grade, so he's been invited to Washington DC. He'll be in the agricultural department, won against third graders. So, we're so excited for him, his parents are gonna give us their livestream, so we wish him good luck. We had Odyssey of the Mind come to campus new this year. We had some parents come and say, "Hey, can we try this program?", and we did it this year with success. We had three teams compete at Southern Connecticut State University, and actually, one of our teams was recognized with an Omar Award for Excellence in Teamwork. So, we're really proud of them. We have a walking club that goes on before school. Our gym teachers come, and the kids do laps. And that counts towards, for the fourth and fifth graders, towards the Ron Dixon Marathon that they'll be competing in in a few weeks. We're a junior achievement campus. We have volunteers, both parents and community volunteers that come in to our thirty-four classrooms on campus and teach entrepreneurship. So, it's great to see them come in five times and really take home of teaching the kids those skills. A campus tradition is our book buddies. Been going on for many years, where the kids from the primary and intermediate come together, and the classes, the students read to each other, and it's more than just reading, it's building a friendship that they get to see each other as they go in. And then there's also like games they play, so the kids, the younger kids are learning their sight word vocabulary. So, it's exciting. We also have, Deb Hawking brings on our reading partners with the Greater Danbury Jewish Coalition. So, those kids are working that struggle slightly, have someone there to read with them and work on their comprehension skills. Exciting, Mr. Obray, our music teacher, who you hear his music tonight. He received a grant from Little Kids Rock. He goes on Saturday classes, and that allowed him to purchase thirty guitars for our campus. So, now he teaches our students first with the ukulele, and then to the guitar. So, it's really exciting, we've got a lot going on. And again, his music is being highlighted in our slideshow tonight. We have new Tom Strong reading therapy dogs that come each week. It's fun to see, you go by the classrooms, you see these reluctant readers just laying on the dog and reading to them. So, it's really honing in and helping them build some stronger skills. We have Cracks Air come in, and we have volunteers from that company coming in, working with our first through third graders. It's a wonderful program that they implemented first at Park, and then they brought it over to us, thanks to, again, another parent that worked at Cracks Air from our school. And the most exciting part about this program is not that they have someone special reading to their class, but those people bring a book, and every kid goes home with that book that they read. So, it's so exciting, and it promotes that important literacy component. We had Tiffany Bowes build us a community garden last year, and Yukon gave us a grow lab. And then this year, it's our second graders who are green buns on campus. They removed all the weeds that were there over the summer, and now they're starting harvesting things that they'll harvest in the fall with their back squash and pumpkins and all that kind of stuff. So, there's some exciting things going on on campus. Our students in third grade on Law Day went to the courthouse, and they made some visits, and they were in the paper the other day, so that was exciting to see. ExxonMobil, one of our parents works for that company, and they got a grant for us. I believe it was a five-hundred-dollar grant that enhanced our classroom libraries and finds books. So, again, just so much, and so much is just from our families and those connections we have. Mr. Odish, our gym teacher at KSI, had won the Danbury Education Foundation Classroom of Excellence five-thousand-dollar grant, so we're gonna have heart rate monitors in phys ed, so he's really been working on that, I'm excited for that for next year. And again, now we go back to our teachers. They go above and beyond each and every day, they go to Donors Choose, we've got desk cycles in classrooms, we've got iPads coming in, we've got Kindle Fire. Our ESL teacher went with a company, Bridgewater Associates, who donated forty iPads. You know, she also got those kids going to the marathon, and they held the caverns, you know. So, those little things to help them be stronger at what they're doing, and make them just stronger students and citizens, and excited. So, the next group of slides is kind of the highlights with, again, another song by Mr. Odish, no, Mr. Obray. Odish, no, Mr. Obray. So it's the end of the school year, and we only have 17 days left if anyone's counting. But, you know, we still have music concerts, kindergarten orientation, volunteer appreciation, summer reading kickoff, our pen pal events coming up, we got our transition night, we got our track meet, we got the health fair coming up, we've got our trip to New York City. The office mural you might have seen that, that's gonna be painted by our fifth graders this year with artist Joseph Pintel. We're a little excited for that. And then there's the promotion ceremony. So 17 days and a lot more to do, and we're excited for this year, and then also 17-18.
How was that song though? Can you sing? No, look, yeah. Look, yeah.
One of my favorite songs.
Yeah.
And I made sure I put it in.
Adam.
Thank you.
This is for your son, our evening?
Yes.
I have a story to that, Bill. I missed it, and you.
Phil Kelly is to say.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, guys. For the boys, just quickly, you remember what that was passed about four years, three years ago now in terms of suspensions for pre-K, one, two, and three? And really, you can't go through the suspens when they're endangering themselves in those major offenses. And this is a program we call restorative practices. It's not an easy program to do, so I mentioned, Joey. It's a different culture change for everyone in terms of that, and, you know, it's something that people pick up skills, the adults as well, over time, because it is doing things differently, so thank you, Bill. And it's been a tough situation for you.
Thank you very much. Can we end on that, or can we don't? Okay, action items.
Action items. The Board of Education accepted the April 2017 Operating Results Analysis General Fund in accordance with Article 17-72.
Second by Mr. Johnson.
Joe, quick recap, you good?
Salary now retired have been, actually, in my, number of my years here, health insurance still continuing to trend well. Busing is older because the buses can be added, so in a sense, it's been the same theme throughout the year, I haven't seen major change. The only outlier now is a pair contract that's up to settle. Can I, can we, yeah, in a few more days? So hopefully, you might have, because none of that money is reflected currently, so about $150,000 or something about outstanding still with them for whatever that award. And, right?
Where's the issue on salaries? Where's the, where's the, yeah, no, the salary?
Oh, we, we, we have a substantial hiring, we added staff because of Grove, Shelter Rock. The school's kind of skating to second. Elsewhere, we did see some additions there. We have seen overloads to high school. We did have ESL teacher added at Shelter Rock, so those have been really some of the...
You should have TE positions.
Yeah, FTE position, we had to add.
Free school.
Free school, special ed teacher, we had to add in mid-year. But again, normal enrollment growth, unfortunately, for Danbury, but, you know, it's luckily trending okay there.
Any questions? All favor?
Aye.
Any questions?
We, we in trouble with any of them for 2008, 17, 18?
We are not. We absorbed the Alliance Club in 250, as we talked about, and we do have a new grant coming online with ACE with $200,000. Those are new initiatives, it's still another nice infusion of money into that program. No, all grants, they're trending well, I'm assuming that they're not overspent as well.
Anyone else? All favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, just taking a, um, any, any notes? Okay.
That the Board of Education approved the increase in school lunch prices for 2017-18 in accordance with 17-74.
Second by Mr. Cooper. Any questions? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, notes? Any questions? Okay, great.
That the Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute inter-school lunch agreements with St. Peter's, St. Gerteries, and Pathways.
Second by Mr. Robinson. Any questions?
This is just, is this an expansion or just a renewal, right?
It's ongoing.
It's ongoing.
Yeah, same, same, same rules that we do with our board of school.
Okay, anyone else? All favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, great.
That the Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute the agreement with CIMC for dental services in accordance with 17-75.
All right. Second by Mr. Malero. Any questions on that? No? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, any no? Any questions? Okay, great.
And that the Board of Education approved the submission of a small improvement grant in accordance with 17-76.
Second by Mr. Malero again. Any questions? Okay, no? All favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Any questions? Okay, great.
And that the Board of Education approved the submission of a small improvement grant in accordance with 17-76.
Second by Mr. Malero again. Any questions? Okay, no? All favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Any questions? Okay, great.
And that the Board of Education approved the submission of a small improvement grant in accordance with 17-76.
Second by Mr. Malero again. Any questions? Okay, no? All favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Any questions? Okay, great. Superintendent Board.
Yeah, Barry Day in Hartford, right? Michael's not here, but he really coordinated apparently for, I know it went well. Bill was there, Joe was there, we had our, we had our own tables. There probably were maybe 14, 13, 14 groups at different tables for the guests. We recognized our schools of distinction. We got to talk about Danbury and the good things that are going on in Danbury. I thought overall it was a good session. We had, it was basically, let's say, it was in session, and we made good, because right at the end, we're all hungry and came in, made coin goings, and other things, so it was well attended, and I thought it went very well.
Mayor was there, quite a lot, lobbyists were there, took a lot of hits.
I think we were able to thank the legislators. I mean, you walked away knowing that, you know, when it came to fighting for Danbury resources, there wasn't an R and a D there. They were really as a team, and they talked that way, which was very, very good to see, and they were sincere about it, so I was very appreciative of it, and thank Michael for doing that. Budget update, this is evolving all the time. As you know, we talked in the committee meeting about waiting, as recent as yesterday and now today, apparently, there is, there was an agreed concession from the governor, which is going to put us in good stead, I think, and hopefully, having a budget recommendation from Montrik regarding our alliance by maybe June 7th, because that's the goal. And I guess Senator McLaughlin, he, you know, he thought that might happen, and that was working for the labor negotiations, so that could be a reality, which would be tremendous for us, because we have a lot of things holding. We have positions holding, people applying for jobs, you know, just holding and holding and holding. That would be great for us. There's no real update on our budget. Our medical is coming about where we expect.
You know, trending where we are, we're playing, no major, major, even our fuel bids are coming pretty close to projections. I mean, the good news is the essence of tight, the bad news is the essence of tight, and the savings coming out of it's good and bad. But no, I don't see any major shifts, and we'll know once we know from Hartford, that'll be our guiding force, I guess, too.
We've gone through and made, you know, the initial reductions, and some of them, we're calling through the FTEs, figured the high schools, we already see them in terms of student selection, and then we have some economies at one of our male schools. So, you know, the 1.3 we've subsumed already at this point, and then we'll see, remember, the cut, the next cut, the budget would be not only getting our alliance grant, but getting two million dollars in addition, if not then, when we come to you in June, that'll reflect the region's budget, right? Lastly, some things happening quickly. I got an email from the two unions, and I'm gonna have to talk to Mr. Hawn. You know, we were moving through on the charter, but I think there's been some differences in terms of direction, when you say it that way politely, and both unions, that would be the administrators and teachers, are likely not to go forward. So I'll talk with him. If that's the case, I'm gonna recommend to you that we don't be there, because what I'm facturing is doing is the recognition of our own faculty and our own administrators, so I think that's changed somewhat, so I have to verify that. I just want to update you to that. There is the very active charter group that is calling warrants and holding meetings as the Brooklyn Charter, that is not Jim Maloney's group, so, you know, that is a separate group. I have scoured through the budget, I don't see where they're funding any charters. Do you, Joe?
No.
So, you know, I just don't see that. So right now, the Danbury one that we're looking at isn't, is not, we can say it that way. I'll come to you at the next meeting after the open, but I do get that done from the two unions, just as today, actually, that's why I'm just... Joe or Joe, can you have any man? Can, did I even have?
Just that we're proceeding at pace with interviewing.
Okay, update on that one, please.
Thank you. This is, we're going into our busiest time, but, you know, we're a little bit slow-walking because of the budget situation, so we're trying to be kind of judicious in filling the most hiding areas and holding off on the ones that are a little bit easier for us to fill. So I know that out in the district, we have sort of a different hiring process, and then teams are assembling across the district, at least to get folks interviewed, to connect with them for the vacancies that we're certain we're gonna have, and we're trying to get everything kind of as well established as we can. Kelly and I have been working to fill some of her harder need positions, and that seems to be going well. It's a, it's a much abbreviated list as opposed to years prior, so most of the names that you heard tonight are the people that we'll be looking to replace. And we are continuing with the process of administrator hires. As you might recall, that elementary folks were the ones we had triaged first, so that is proceeding at pace, and the first rounds have been done, and we're just in the process of that as well. So we're hopeful that well before your last meeting, that you'll have similar information from us almost. So that's it. That's it.
We just got something ready, you're hot off the press.
We won the lottery?
No, we didn't. Yeah.
And that's it.
Speaking to the mic, I'm here.
Oh, no, it's, it's a post from Michael McLaughlin, and he said the Connecticut Senate is tied 18 to 18 on this budget talk, so of course the lieutenant governor will break the tie, so it'll go...
And, you know, and we, we air the best with the governor's budget. In terms of us, we go okay with the Republican ones, so we do better in the others, so that's a good, that's a good, I'm just calling. I think that's what happened. That just came in.
Hot off the press. Technology, what are you gonna do? All right, full discussion. We don't get any information. Board chairperson's report, don't think he has anything. Just a Memorial Day parade, have we finalized who's going, or we got, what do you got, like a band or something following us, what's going on?
Oh, we have, oh, I follow.
Chilly, blah.
He gets the voters first.
A lot of behind us now.
Yeah. Are there some students or something?
I want you to pay the guys with the guns, that joke. Now, we have the kids near the six schools. They invited the parents and kids to march. We have our band, the cheerleaders, and there's another group that's marching.
Yeah, but we like, I know they marched in pretty, but are we like, near them, or are we gonna see like, you know, near the garbage trucks?
This is done with, wait, the very meticulous, Debbie sent out an email.
Yeah, so.
They had the map, and where everybody's at, so they got us lined up.
I'm saying, because I didn't look at the map.
You're first, you're first with the stage six, I think, you're tied to the harness pole.
So you're, uh...
I think we made it behind, we made it behind the band.
Oh, I'll take that.
I think, but anyway, we had to look on it. She sent us, they sent the map.
Do they have a banner, or what? You put it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm not wearing a card. We made it with a pipe, so the kids can carry it.
Yeah, you got it.
You're wearing the harness and pulling the car?
Yeah. All right, so, Pat, myself? Sal, you'll be there? And you'll be there? Anyone else?
I got baseball.
Come on, baseball. Come on.
Fred, Fred, come on, you, you go to everything. You're not up to this? I got the people out, see, man.
Why'd you wear a wig?
We'll bring somebody for you to negotiate.
Okay, so I'll be, so I'll be there, Sal, I'll be here, I'll be here to house him.
You got it.
It's, the lineup, from what I saw, was right beside where the, where the people wait for the bus.
Yeah, but you can't, you find somebody.
What time was it?
I gotta look at the thing, I think it's...
Yeah, check, check email.
Most of late, it's not, so they'll want you to park around me through.
Yeah, it's all on drive, I'm riding, I'm good. Okay, any, any other reports from anyone in?
Ralph, just one. I'd like to request a facilities meeting in, you know, in the not-too-distant future. Lots of stuff we gotta go through.
Who's the chairperson? Kathy, would you like to request a, I'd like to request a facilities meeting.
We have the gentleman, same gentleman's coming down, he was supposed to be down last school.
He's the way indication affects the basketball, he's now...
To look at the...
Portables at West Side.
Portables at West Side, that's the thing we're looking at.
Okay, cool.
I went to the High School Forest Choir.
Let's hear what you gotta say.
Went to the High School Forest Choir at the Danbury High School, and it was very well done, very nice. A lot of alumni came and sang, and it was a very nice show that they've done.
Awesome.
I get a chance to go, but actually, they're tremendous, they're really good.
Joe, you wanna do it on the seventh before the board meeting?
We have board meeting on the seventh?
No, we have board meeting on the 14th.
We have, uh...
You wanna go down the...
Yankees, Watson, fun.
That one's the name? Yeah, so I understand.
Paul is on the center.
You think it's the...
You know, this morning, there's a workshop, is it?
I don't, which one, the...
Is it right, it's before one of our board meetings?
It's the 14th.
14th.
Okay, great, 14th. Okay.
It's at 5:30 on the 14th, is the 318 system 44 meeting with David.
Oh, okay.
From 5:30 to 7:00. Right before 7:00 on the 14th.
Okay, cool.
So for the party.
Wear something tall.
Can't have flag down the same day when the post comes.
Okay, anything else? Go on, second, you said, no. Motion to adjourn. Second by us all now, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.